Okay, we're live and it's seven o'clock and please sit because. Uh, we have to have a public hearing. I did notice the public hearing, but I did not. So, um. I would like to call the public hearing to order and Jessica, would you do the roll call? Bakers?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Dryden?
Here.
Hedrick? Heinz? Here. Mitchell?
Here.
Stuart?
Here.
Thompson? The Dawson County City of Glendale Planning Board Acting Zoning Commission for the City of Glendale conducted a public hearing on the proposed twenty twenty-four amendments to the City of Glendale zoning regulations on July eleventh, twenty twenty-four. The proposed modifications to the regulations are intended to implement changes to the Montana Planning and Zoning laws enacted by the Montana Legislature. Additionally, the modifications will address outstanding issues with respect to the modernization of the existing zoning code, making the regulations easier to understand, implement, and enforce. The proposed modifications, if enacted, will be applicable to and affect all lands now and thereafter located within the corporate limits of the City of Glendale. A copy of the proposed modifications to the city zoning regulations is available for public review at the City of Glendale Public Works Department during regular business hours. Questions may be directed to Forrest Sanderson, City County Planner, at four oh six seven nine four one four six zero or forest sanderson at peaksplanning dot on microsoft dot com. Public comment is encouraged. Do we have any public comments in favor of the zoning changes? Do we have any public comments opposed to the zoning changes?
I do not. I got, once you're done, I have a question.
Oh, okay. Well, with that said, then we will close the public hearing. And you have a question?
Maybe I, I was just gonna ask about the recommendations of the planning board must have made a recommendation out there.
Well, I did, um, read them all the, a few months ago. I don't know if you recall it, but then it went to the county planning board. And so now it's just coming back to us.
And with changes or without any change?
I don't, were there changes?
No, it was, it's exactly what the, um, I brought for.
Okay.
So, we, we would have had this hearing in oh, that first week of August, but that's when I was on the committee, so.
And we had to move it because we, we had put, we had posted it that it would be on August sixth. And that was the day of the National Night Out. And so we moved the meeting and so then we reposted that. I read it at this meeting and it's just, if anyone has questions, Forrest is the person to talk to.
Okay.
Okay, okay. All right, well, we'll move right along then to all right. We'll move on then to the call order for the Glendale City Council meeting on September seventeenth. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father, Son, and God. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice Great, Jessica, there should be the roll call again. Baker?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Dryden?
Here.
Hedrick? Heinz? Here. Mitchell?
Here.
Stewart?
Here.
Thompson? Fire? Operations? Police? Here. Public work?
Here.
Referee? Ambulance? Here. All right, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of this September third, twenty final budget public hearing? We'll move over page five in a second. Okay, wait. All in favor of approving the minutes of this September third, twenty twenty-four final budget public hearing, say aye. Any abstaining? Next, could I get a motion to approve the minutes of this September third, twenty twenty-four public hearing setting meals for premium contribution? Right, in a second. Okay, go. All in favor of approving the minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-four public hearing setting meals for premium contribution, say aye. Any abstaining? The minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting, could I get a motion for that? Go ahead, okay. Second. Jason? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes of the September third, twenty twenty-four regular council meeting, say aye. All right, abstaining? All right, next we move to old business. We have the street committee report.
All right, uh. This will be my final street committee report for everybody. Uh, good luck to you next time doing.
Let me think about that.
He called me in the tour. Hey, do this.
It's not that hard.
All right, uh, so the streets committee we met on September eleventh, uh, two thousand twenty-four. Uh, the new members present were Marcel, Councilman Poon, Councilwoman Heinz, and Councilman Dryden. Uh, other city officials present were Mayor Dionne, Secretary of State, Secretary of State, Secretary of State. Glendale Police Department Assistant Chief Katie Mills, Treasurer Darcy Seaman, Administration Department Director Justin Wrights, and our Dispatch Supervisor Janet Moore. Uh, members of the public, guest president were Peggy Iba and Sarah Palmer. There was also one other gentleman there. Had a beer, but he didn't sign the sheet. And then from media, we had a, Brent Hyner from Ranger Review. Many meetings called to order at four p.m. We had two agenda items. Uh, the first was a letter from a citizen concerned about Kendrick Avenue. The city received a letter from Mr. Lou Melby raising concerns about the state of the pavement on Kendrick Avenue and the block between West Clement Street, Spindam Street. Uh, Mr. Melby rides his bike through there regularly and feels the broken and the pavement, pavement near the curves there makes a hazard for cyclists. Um. Public Works Director Sean noted that he is aware of that issue and that it has been an issue that's stayed a bit longer for some time. Mr. Sean explained very thoroughly, and I had it very well, how to prepare for sure, city streets funded, planned, and worked on ice. I noted that finding funding for any kind of fix like that is a major issue, if not the major issue, um, because it currently costs the city about seven hundred and eighty thousand to resurface just one block of city street and over a million for a complete rebuild of one block. So there's no action taken on this item, just a FYI for the council. Uh, the second agenda item was a street closure and open container waiver to celebrate the completion of the Merrill Avenue project. So this was a request made by the Building Act of Glendale Committee. Uh, so Ms. Peggy Iba from that committee requested the council grant a street closure for one block of Merrill Avenue between Dante and Power Streets on Saturday, September twenty-first, from six P M. to twelve A M. Uh, she had also requested the council grant an open container waiver for the same location of the same time period. Uh, the purpose was to hold a community celebration to mark completion of the Merrill Avenue project. Committee did recommend both street closure and the open container waiver for the dates of time requested. Uh, however, subsequent to that, um, Ms. Iba notified the public and the city as well, uh, that, uh, that request is now moot and does not require any action from us at this time because she, the MDT is actually not quite finished with the street there. Apparently, it'd be actually, she was told be working that day, so. Uh, unfortunately, no celebration at this time. See you here, Mike. Uh, there was no problem. You'll have a comment given.
Thanks, Jason. Could we give the Hooper Committee report? Thank you.
Mike? You're welcome, man. Okay, well, the Hooper Committee met, uh, immediately after a street committee on September eleven. Yeah, I didn't know of anybody that didn't sign the list, so. There you have it. First item was about a lot aggregation request. Lot aggregation request. So Public Works Director Sean received a request to aggregate lots nine through twelve in block one sixteen of the original townsite of Glendale. And the committee recommends council approval of the amended plot request. Revo family. The second item was a grant application. Dispatch Director, uh, Moore requested permission to apply for a cybersecurity grant. No city match for twenty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars over three years. It's parceled out annually, divide that by three, eight, six, four, something. This grant would be part of the nine-one-one fund due to the application deadline on September thirteenth, twenty-four. Well, the committee told him to go ahead with the grant application, but the council still needs to, uh, vote on that tonight. And we recommend you vote for it. Number three, the, uh, leasing equipment at Rec Center. Mayor Dionne recommended that the city end its lease on September thirtieth with Sacred Heart Church for the use of the recreation center. Also, the mayor recommended the city adopt a resolution to declare obsolete the city's recreation equipment currently stored at the recreation center. Once declared obsolete, the city can choose to disperse equipment through local entities, nonprofits, et cetera, or to donate said equipment to Sacred Heart Church for use at their discretion. The committee recommends the council approval of the city ending its lease with Sacred Heart Church by the end of this month, September thirtieth. And it's recommended the council approve declaring the city's recreation equipment stored at the Sacred Heart Gymnasium obsolete. Uh, the next item was on city dog cat license fee enforcement increase. License fee and enforcement increase. Mayor Dionne Police Department recommended increasing the fees for pet owners residing in the city to license their dogs and cats. This will help cover costs associated with enforcement of current city codes. Enforcement of the licenses will assist the police in locating pet owners whose animals have been picked up in accordance with city codes. Uh, no action. This will probably make up for the ordinance committee. Um, I didn't put the dollar increases because it's gonna go to another committee so they can take it on as they see. The next one is, uh, B M S, it's not Blackwater.
Blackmount.
Blackmount, excuse me, Black Mountain Pay Proposal for the City. Black Mountain, by the way, is our software, um, provider and maintainer. The city clerk reached, brought forward a proposal from Black Mountain Software Incorporated to allow the city to achieve online payment and e-billing. The committee recommends the council approval of the B M S pay contract. Um, that'll be on the action tonight. The next item is about a time limit for public comment to be added to the city codes. Mayor Dionne brought a recommendation from the local government center at M S U Bozeman. The center recommended that the city place time limits for public comments in the city codes. This could include time limits for public comments at committee meetings. We talked about five minutes, council meetings, or maybe the mayor recommended, we agreed, and the three minutes for the, uh, council meeting, excuse me, and then public hearings. I'm not sure that we came up with something, but the committee recommended this be sent to the ordinance committee for their proposal to amend the city code so they will, uh, get the details out of that, so. Um, I think there's more to it. I mean, when I, I went over a seat, um, is that it? Oh, okay, well, I guess all I had to say, then we adjourned at, um, five fifty, is that right, Joanne? Remember what time we left that day?
Yeah, it was, it was five fifty.
Okay, and there was no public comment, so that concludes my report, man.
All right, thank you. Okay, now it is time for public comment. We have Mr. Pauls who signed up for comment, so if you could come forward so that our owl can pick up your comment.
Forward of a position.
Yep, that should be good.
Okay, I, uh.
And just identify yourself and your address.
Lake Falls, fourteen twenty North Meads Avenue.
Thank you.
Came to my attention a couple of weeks ago that there was an article in the paper about setbacks and came on City Letter, and it made me aware that the city is familiar with setbacks. When I moved in here in nineteen ninety-five, came back to Glendale, I was raised here. Um, and I moved into the house at fourteen twenty, and I had one neighbor on that triangle block. And that neighbor then informed me of the property and the different stipulations of what's been going on. Part of that was he put a front addition on his house with a variance to change his setback. And he informed me how he did that. And several years later, I used the same process, came to this council, letters were sent to neighbors around, and got the variance approved with a new front addition on my house. And that became the setback issue for that job specific, my property. And, uh, from that point, then it made me very aware that, uh, the city was aware in the situation with I have a fence right next to me. And that fence right next to me, ten foot tall alongside my driveway. And that's on a main street. So basically what it says, it was approved, and there was an order from the judge, but I'm understanding that the order from the judge is kind of hard to, uh, understand that order. Basically said the board of adjustments made a bad decision. And what to do from there, I guess it's kind of hard to understand, but, you know, I think you have the ability for council to work through that. And I, I wish you would, uh. The fence issue started May twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-two. As a senior citizen of this community, I, I don't think it's right that we are treated in such disrespect to lose our view, our acquired view. That's why we have setbacks. And so every house up and down the street can go to their front door and they can look at the adjoining intersection. Oh, they just went around the corner. Well, here they come around the corner. Uh, we don't do that. You shouldn't do that. There's an article of, I read just a while ago, it was, uh, um, sorry, I forget which related company, rupert.com or something. It was about setbacks. And it said the various things that really are against the law. And there's things in this position that are there, in my opinion. And I believe the judge made some remark to that too, but just the understanding where you go from here is something else. And I know you do have, uh, your zoning commission, you brought it up to begin with, and I know that Forrest Anderson made the comment to Hunter Herbaugh in an interview, certainly when this was going on. And it, basically, there was three points in there that are they talking about my property?
Your title, sorry.
Okay.
Sorry, your three minutes is up. Um, you, you're, um, free to write your comments and send them to us and we can, um, look at them. Thank you very much. Um, the first item of new business is to explain the budget constraints with the street repairs. That's just an FYI. I don't think we really need to do that because, uh, Jason did an excellent job of explaining it in his meeting minutes. So did anybody have any discussion about that? All right, that's just an FYI. We'll move to the next item, which Jason also explained, which is the street closure request was denied due to the street still being under construction. So that was just an FYI. Is there any discussion about that? Okay. The item is to approve the lot aggregation for lots nine to twelve in block one sixteen of the original townsite of Glendale. Could I get a motion for that?
Make a motion.
Okay, in a second.
Sorry.
Okay. All in favor of approving the lot aggregation for lots nine to twelve in block one sixteen of the original townsite of Glendale, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? All right, the next item is to approve the grant application for the cybersecurity grant. Did I get a motion for that? Okay, fine, in a second. Okay, Joanne. All in favor of approving the grant application for the cybersecurity grants, say aye. Any abstaining? The item is to, um, approve resolution three one six zero, so I will read that resolution. It's a resolution declaring equipment at the Glendale Rec Center obsolete, whereas the City of Glendale has terminated the lease of the Sacred Heart Gym with the Sacred Heart Church effective September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, and the sacred, whereas the Sacred Heart Gym has been used as a city recreation center and has recreation equipment and whereas the city no longer has a use for the equipment located at the Sacred Heart Gym and whereas the city would like to donate the equipment so the recreational activities can continue and whereas currently a group of parents are using the soccer equipment and have a place to store it and whereas the city has appropriate groups who have requested the remaining equipment and now therefore, uh, be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Glendale, Montana as follows. Number one, the city will donate the equipment to appropriate groups committed to continuation programs. Number two, any remaining equipment in the Sacred Heart Gym will be gifted to the Sacred Heart Church. Uh, could I get a motion to approve the resolution? Okay. Jason, in a second?
Sorry.
Is there any discussion about this? Yes, Jason?
I'm sure, I'm sure this is this is much true, as far as your concern.
Yes.
Yeah, it's, uh, pretty clear in statute that property can be donated.
My, my one question, I know I raised it last time.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor of approving resolution three one six zero, say aye.
Aye.
Any abstaining? Now, the next item is, uh, the dog and cat ordinance changes. We'll go to the ordinance committee. That's just an FYI. Um, so our next item that requires action is to approve the Black Mountain Pay Proposal for the city. It is included in the budget, so could I get a motion for that? Okay, Mike, in a second. Jason, all right. Is there, um, any discussion about this? All in favor of approving Black Mountain Pay Pro- Proposal for the city, say aye. Uh, any opposed?
Oh, yes. Jessica talked about the history of this, and I didn't want to get into it in my report because I don't want to mess up what she had done.
Yeah.
She's never messed up anything I ever told her, so I, but, but she said that we've already been kind of around the block on this particular issue, but we approved it, so it's all good now.
Okay, great. So, uh, now did we already vote on it?
Yes, in fact, we did, right?
The next item is just an FYI. We will add a time limit and a timer for public comment to the ordinance. One, six, ten. It will go to the ordinance committee. Um, what is recommended is that we have a timer that the per, it's visible to the person to see how much time they have left. So I, I could see that that could have been a benefit to Mr. Pauls. And so I think, um, there's a lot of them online. They're not expensive, but we just need to get one. And, you know, big enough for people to see it. Uh, they said you could also use a Sam timer, but, um, I don't know, the ones I saw were quite small, but anyway, so we'll discuss it at the ordinance committee, but I know that there's been some questions about what kind of a timer we need and you know, I mean, we could use a kitchen timer too that's taken down and dinging on them, but those are the kinds of
To be visual.
It needs, they need to be able to see it, so. Yes.
Uh, Mayor, since I'm not on that committee, I won't be there, I just, uh, I want to hear what I got to say about it, but you guys might look at whether, um, if you want. Certainly, it may be more than what we need, but on the ordinance or the amendment to the ordinance would be somebody talks about an item on the agenda versus not on the agenda, even at the council meeting, you could look at a separate time for that. I would recommend more for on the agenda than versus not on it, but, uh, if you don't want to do that, and you kind of just want to follow council meeting this amount, committee, fine, that's, that's okay too, but anyway, it's something to be, uh, definitely looked at and you guys can bring forward what you think.
Next item is also just an, uh, FYI item, um. I did contact, uh, some people about the opioid money to see if it can go in the nine-one-one fund, and I haven't heard back, so. Um, when I do hear something, I'll bring that forward. Another item is that we were notified, we were approved for the funds from House Bill three fifty-five. We are planning on making some improvements, uh, down in Douglas Street. Need and yeah. And the audit from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three is publicly available for viewing at City Hall. The final budget for next year is also available for public inspection at City Hall. Now, could I get a motion to approve accounts payable claims of two million, seven hundred forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and three cents?
I'll make a motion and save time, obviously. I agree to that number.
Okay, these are it, and, uh, second?
All second.
Okay, go ahead. All in favor?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, two point seven nine million, seven, four million, excuse me, um. Is this closing out our? We still got a ways to go yet with, uh, B E K out of Dickinson Consulting, or is this kind of closing that out yet?
Well, I wouldn't say it's
Should, should be a little bit.
Yeah, there will be another one. Um, but I will say that, uh, a lot of that project was funded through Biden's infrastructure, um, whatever it's called. Anyway, so we have, we are waiting to get the money, so although we have the checks ready for these guys, they will not get paid till the money goes into our account. So, um, that was something that I, I wasn't aware that we had to wait, but we do, so, um, and it should be soon, but we, this, I think, is our third, third payment. I think there will be. Okay, so all in favor of approving accounts payable claims of two million, seven hundred forty thousand, three hundred and eighty-nine dollars and three cents? Say aye.
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move to department head comments, and Mr. Sean?
Uh, yeah, Cruz been busy, been, uh, doing the street work, replacing a few valves in the water water main, uh, some problems that we identified with, uh, B E K is out, so we've done a total of, uh, four valves. That, he's been busy, uh, cleaning up and working in Lanto, getting that done. E E two regulated and approved asbestos site for the Jordan Inn. About a thousand on grant writing.
You are, Frank.
Still, I'm pretty excited about that. Am I getting any questions?
Yeah, I, I know it's not
I was just, I was looking at you, I was waiting.
Well, I know it's not, um, in our ballpark here, so to speak, but any idea on the Merrill Avenue here when the, yeah, the state will be done with, uh, or Prince, when that'll be done with concreting the, at least the street, concreting around the sewer? You answered that question, man.
Tell me that they will be going through October. So, I mean, I don't know, it could go longer than that, too.
So we see people making left turns around with you, people driving down the street, everybody on the right lane headed this direction, uh, swerves around, swerves, swerves, okay.
Anything else, Frank?
No, that's it.
Okay, did you have anything, Mr. Rupert?
That's right, there, thank you.
Okay, how about you, Miss Mills?
I just would like to say that
Dawson County Sheriff's Office has started a major project at our facility, so I'll get it. And so that has really limited all the walking traffic through dispatch into the sheriff's office and. We're asking that they call dispatch, we have nowhere for them to walk into. Um, and then we'll have officers come out to the parking lot and visit with them. All perfect.
How about you, Ms. Fainer?
Oh, yeah, a busy, busy, busy weekend. Um. Vines. Grabbed up all our rodeo stand buys until spring, so that's. We still do a lot of football, yeah, nice. Some of you may remember about two years ago, I asked permission to apply for grants from Montana Department of Transportation for, uh. Um, two ambulance cot upgrade for our last ambulance that does not have the nice cot. The cot, we did get that grant and the cot showed up today and should be installed, maybe about this second week. All four of our. Ambulances will be finished with power load cots that. Which is a lot. But that's exciting for us.
Yeah, that sounds great.
They work pretty well.
Alright, thank you. Don't see anybody else there, so. Um. The city court report is in your package. The ordinance committee, we will meet September twenty third at four P M. The personnel committee will meet the same day at four fifteen P M. So I will quickly go through my mayor comments. I want to encourage people who are interested in serving as a councilperson for Ward Two. To get their resume to City Hall by five A M. Friday. Currently, I have two hours. And once again, I want to express my thanks to Ashley Knapp, Kevin Pena, Bobby Hanson, and to all the other parents who work so hard. To assure that the fall soccer program continues. I also want to thank Kevin, who agreed to store the equipment at the end of the season. People who step up like this are what make Glenda a wonderful community to live in. And we have given official notice to terminate the gym lease with the Sacred Heart Church. When we have a final financial accounting of the total expenses associated with the rec center, I will bring it to the city council. We are being transparent about the costs and the final accounting will be published. We had three city residents who signed up to be part of the government study commission. We don't have to vote on this since we needed three and three have stepped forward. They will begin work after the November election. We were notified by an employee of the Army Corps of Engineers that we were not selected for the grant. We asked for help with the solutions to Pennington Park. Uh, while this is disappointing, we'll move forward and continue to look for opportunity. Needs to get assistance for this serious ongoing problem. And I want to thank everybody who worked on that grant, Jason and Frank, and. Um, I thought it looked great. I thought we were shooing, so. That was. A little disappointing, but then on a brighter note. We were notified that the cleanup of the Jordan will begin on September thirtieth, so I think everyone knows that. Um, this will be done by the E P A in, in coordination with the. E E Q, they'll also be here, and this will be at no cost to the city taxpayers. Now, there've been some questions on, on Facebook, I guess, about the hiring freeze, so. I just want to remind people, we did discuss this at a committee meeting. And it was determined that this would only result in more overtime to fill open positions. So we did not bring it forward to the council, and while we not be creating any new positions. We will fill open positions to reduce open. And then I want to say that this is Jason Stewart's last council meeting, and I want to take this opportunity to thank him for all he has done in his eleven years. Truly worked hard to make Glendive a better place, and we thank him for all his efforts. We wish you and your family the best, Jason, and again, thank you.